One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Melissa, and we have roll call, please.
Uh, councilmember, please.
I'm here.
Councilmember, please.
Here, here.
All right, now is the time for public comment, anything which is not on the itemized agenda, that would be the time to say it. Julie?
I would just like to introduce a couple friends I have with me, I remember it's Taylor and Katie Stewart, who are from US EPA Region 9 in San Francisco, they're just up visiting for a couple days, and I just want to let you know how supportive and helpful they've been, in the fact that we're in non-attainment, and they're providing us some great resources as far as finding grants, helping us apply for grants, doing some public outreach campaigns, and so I just want to thank them for being here and showing its support of the EPA for this region. Thank you.
Thank you. Larry, do you have anything to say?
Mm-hmm. This is Gary Wood, we're doing a supervisor meeting. I'm Larry Ebbes, of the High School Community Development Center. I believe the city council should be held at a standard that follows the procedures manual, which is on the agenda tonight. And the features of our general plan is the vision that the city will provide public services suited and affordable through the residents. My last letter is the other example of this subject, in that the letter states that the council has to change its policies, it has circumvented the taxpayers' rights in Proposition 218 process. Since that letter, I have joined Howard Jarvis Taxpayers Association. We are petitioning elected officials in Sacramento to prevent tax-expend politicians from reforming Prop 13 by cutting its constitutional protections. While the association maintains a full-time presence in Sacramento, I believe that we need to have a portola. I have questioned the city's Proposition 218 since 2011. You have been reforming Proposition 218 by cutting its protection for fee increases to be approved by ballot approval. If you take the initiative to read the city attorney's contract and the procedures manual, you will discover how this is happening, and how the city attorney has shielded their corporation from liability. You were not shielded. The association has led the legal defense of Prop 13 against three major court challenges, including the case of Noel Inchin and Han, which led the United States Supreme Court to sponsor and pass 218, the right to vote on tax act, to restore and expand taxpayer protections provided by Prop 22, by Prop 13. I was at the supervisor's meeting yesterday, and I took the time to compliment them on the sack fines they made over the last eight years. The employees, particularly of the union, have been there for the last four sections, pleading for cost of living, and stating the various things that they've done, and way of cutting back on saving money, and even losing employees that went to 100-paying jobs. At the same time, the council, or the supervisor, took the initiative to not have a, have a city administrator that saved them something like $200,000. We're looking at things that they're doing, and how they're stepping up, and I have to really commend them, but at the same time, they went by the law and put two propositions on the ballot that were defeated by the taxpayers. And that's been the challenge that they've had. In our legislation and our general plan, we don't have anything guarantees rate increases or furs. We have insurances that we're supposed to have about public services, and I think that's necessary, if you're going to extend.
Thank you, Larry. Does anybody else have any public comment? Seeing no further public comment, I will close then. And just a note, since we are missing two of our council members, as well as Steve, our city attorney, we are going to take the review of the portola procedures manual out, table it for the next meeting, as well as the closed session. City Communications, City Council Committee reports.
What's it called?
Ad hoc?
Ad hoc.
Ad hoc.
Had a meeting with Chamber of Commerce with regards to our webpage. It was a productive meeting, did some changes, and turned it back to Melissa and the city as to exactly where we want, what we want to see on our webpage. So Melissa and Karen, I believe, are going to get together and come up with a plan, and then we'll re-meet, but as of now, we're not going to have any further meetings until they come up with a plan. Had a blast at the beef feed, I was fortunate enough to help serve food, and it was a lot of fun, and good turnout for them as well.
Melissa?
Thank you, Bill.
You enjoyed the beef feed as well, a lot of trust on that department. I spent six days at a Turner, lopping, bucking, and limping those trees, green timber, trying to get it opened up, and drying out. Built another table, built a bench, good news there, thought I only have one more table to build, my rug's empty, I can actually see my floor. And we had an infrastructure meeting, kind of interesting things there, we're looking at recommending taking, making the garbage bill under responsibility. Also, some discussion about tying it back to water service shut-offs. And the reasons for that are, we have 232 households that aren't subscribed to the garbage drought, and we have 17% non-payment of the garbage bill in Portola, the rest of the county is like .5% or .7%. So anyway, Rick's looking for some help on that. And that's where I've been.
Thank you. I missed the ad hoc committee because I had a doctor's appointment that ran long, but on June 27th, ILO Portola hosted their first ILO Portola Highway Clean-Up from Adopta Highway. We had three people show up besides me, so we had four, we got about halfway done. Richard Arnold, who is a regular attendee, who is, he comes occasionally and he'll clean up part of our highway, even though that's not his section, you know, he helps out on that, so thank you to him, who is not here today. And that would be it for City Council Communications. Moving on to City Manager Communications Report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Council members, I don't know if you're aware of this, but yesterday's rain event played a little bit of havoc on your city infrastructure, to the point where the county even called because it was up on the internet that we were flooding, but we didn't go too far underwater, but our storm drain systems did have some issues as of last night, so your staff got on it first thing this morning. Nothing serious, but we did have some backups and whatnot that we took care of.
It was a commercial in California.
Yeah, so up on A-15 in Colorado, up on the north side.
A lot of rain in the hurry.
Yeah. Coming up in August, just a reminder that the city is tentatively set for depositions on the Lake Davis lawsuit, which goes to trial October 15th, and should last for three weeks. Folks involved from your city staff will be Jim Murphy, your former city manager, Karen, Susan, myself, and these will take place in Truckee, the pre-depositions, and we've already met once on this. They have sent out 78 questions to the city that they want answered. The beef feed was a great success, ran out of salad at one point, cookies went real fast. And for, folks, if you haven't been to that thing, it's $15 for all you can eat and drink. It's a good...
It was very delicious, and the company was great.
And that includes beer, or soda, or both. And the cookies were made by lawn boards. Yeah, really nice. Railroad Days is shaping up. Unfortunately, we will probably not have the caboose repainted by the 21st, just because we lost our painters. But I know the mayor really wanted that done, and I apologize, we just don't have the manpower. We are working towards getting those drought refuges we talked about, I think we put in for six now. That's moving forward. Staff is working on some time-sensitive grants, we still have some work to do for the pre-approved funding from the state for the arsenic wellhead, and for Turner's planning. We also have the Integrated Regional Water Management proposed funding applications due by the third. I've nearly completed the one for the sewer project, which was the CDVG grant that failed due to improper, my accusation is improper, accounting by the state, but... And Karen is trying to wrap up some of the CDVG grants. We had some landfill recertification reports that were time-sensitive due, we got those in, and then the state parks, which is on the agenda later. We're still working through the negotiation with the SOMAT group on the Highlands and Woodbridge project. Staff is getting to the point where we think we should probably calendar a special meeting with you all, because the only council member that was around when this development agreement was put together was John Maru. And they're asking for some real substantive changes, which you can grant, but they have to come from the council, not staff. So in order for you all to do that, you've got to understand what this development agreement said, and what they're going to be proposing. They have thrown somewhat of a monkey wrench in it, saying if we can't get past one item, then there's no sense in even moving forward. But we're pretty confident we'll get to an agreement on that. Yes. And the Flood Control District, who manages the water for us, keeps the water in Lake Davis in trust for the city, has asked for a meeting with the state water, the Department of Water Resources themselves and us, and that is set for August 7th. It's in regards to the operation of the lake, and what we will have to do if we have to go down to that third level to extract the water for the city. That's August 7th. And then I just got off the phone with the sheriff, he's lost two deputies this month, so he's really trying to honor the contract that is still sitting on county council's desk, even though it hasn't been signed by them, we're still, we've got a pretty good working relationship going, deputies are checking in, animal control folks are checking in with us, and helping as needed. But I think that's about it. Everything else is on the agenda.
All right, thank you, Robert. Staff communications, is there any staff communications?
I don't think so.
Last Monday was Transportation Commission, and normally either council member Powers or Maru will report on that, but I'm also on that commission, very little on the agenda, went pretty fast, it's my very fastest meeting ever, it was 10 minutes. Not a whole lot going on at the Transportation Commission last Monday. They were looking at changing a couple of things on their route, but it did not affect the city portola.
Thank you, Susan. Seeing no further staff communications, we'll move on to the consent calendar. These items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. The city council will act upon them as one at one time without discussion. Any council member, staff member, or interested party may request that an item be removed from the consent agenda for discussion. Additional budget appropriations will require a forfeits roll call vote. Do I have a motion?
Move to adopt minutes, June 24th, and Resolution 2238.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Order of Business, A, Proclamation of Local Emergency Due to Drought Conditions in Portola, California. Review proclamation, discussion, and/or possible action. This will be, many, many times that we have done this, so we're just going to be extending it out. I doubt the two of us again, do I? All right, do I have a motion? Oh, Mike, a motion. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Proclamation of local emergency due to drought conditions in Portola has passed.
Just as a reminder, this is the state requirement that we do this every month, until the state has determined the drought is officially over, and though with this recent rain, where I was telling Phil, we're almost close to normal on rainfall precipitation, obviously the lakes are still low, and the state will not consider the drought over until the reservoirs are filled, so we could be in this situation for a long period of time. Having said that, with your permission, we'll probably start just putting this on the consent calendar every month, since it's a non-controversial IO item.
I think that's a very good idea.
It's a good idea.
Okay. Moving on, B, City Engineer Employment Agreement. Consider and possible action to approve city engineer employment contract.
Madam Mayor, council members, this is a requirement by the state, and this is related to the A-15 project. The staff report was done by Karen, it's pretty straightforward. Again, it probably could have been on the consent calendar, but it is here for you to act on independently.
If I can adjust just a couple of issues here, because there's been confusion about this in the past, and I redid the contract with the new dollar amount, so I have reviewed the information that Dan Bastian gave us. What he does is he knows how much this entire project is, and how much is available for engineering, and because of the requirement for him to be an employee for this part, he's still an independent contractor for other work that he does for us, but for him to be an employee for this part, we take that dollar amount, and we just spread it out over the length of time that this project is going. When it gets close to the end, then we take a look at that, see where it stands. As a matter of fact, you might remember that last year, you approved a contract renewal for him for $0 for a while, because he had already received as much as he could under the state agreement, and so, but he still needed to be an employee. He gets no benefits, he gets no furs, no health insurance, nothing like that, which has been something that has seemed to be a confusion in the past, but just so you know, that's how this works.
And Susan, everything that we pay him at the A-15 is reimbursable by the state, correct?
Every penny.
And the AB 155 doesn't come into effect with him? That's a good question. That's something that I think we should look into.
I do. I don't know, that's a good question. I didn't take a look at that when I was redoing the contract.
Well, you would have thought Steve would have seen that if that was the case, because you reviewed this as well, so, we'll double check on that.
But if that, but if that is the case, then that would be, I think that if he took any, I don't see how it would take any sick time. It's a flat, anyway, let's take a look at that. But in the meantime, we'd like to get this going, because as of August 1st, he really is jumping into this, the A-15, the next phase of A-15.
Would you think it'll break ground for the next phase?
You know, these things take forever.
It's spring next year, probably.
Or the year after.
All right, and I do have one more question. So in the contract, it's showing approximately $11,000 a month that we're going to pay him. Is that going to be coming out of the general fund until the end of the project, where he'll get reimbursed? Or is that going to be automatically reimbursed from the state on a month-to-month, or...
No, Dan puts in invoices on behalf of the city as the project goes along, and so his payroll comes out of a fund that's separate, if you look at it on, it's a separate fund.
So it's already funded?
So it runs in the negative until he builds and brings it back, so he's technically, you can say the general fund would have to cover it, you know, in the meantime, but it is 100% reimbursable, and we do completely track everything, his in a separate fund, so there's never a question about, you know, what's due back from the state.
Okay, before I take public comment, do I have a motion?
I would make a contingency motion, I would really like to know about the AB 155. I think the contract is fine, but if AB 155 does come to play, then I think we need to look at that a little bit further.
I think anything that comes to play in terms of this would be completely reimbursed by the state, and I'm not exactly sure, I'm trying to think of how that would even work, because he's not required to work a set amount of hours, or anything like that, so I'll run it by Steve tomorrow, we'll be talking to him about another issue, so...
Okay, then I make a motion, but it's...
What's that, could it?
Okay, public comment, Larry?
I was at the board's resume yesterday, when Robert Brown brought forward a project they're doing and funding, and I asked him if they were required to have an employee as the engineer, and he said no. This is being funded by the federal, state, and county. I'd like to see this, and why, this is requiring us to have employees that are contracted out. I don't understand the reason that they're requiring, that making us have an employee.
Would you be able to meet with him later on in the week, or next week, to explain that?
Sure.
Is that okay with you, Larry? Mike?
Yeah, just out of curiosity, after the A-15 process, will Mr. Bastian be terminated?
Well, the contract has an end date.
And employment ends with the end date?
Right, he's still our city engineer, and he still does other work for us.
Oh, yes.
This is only for this project?
Correct.
And it's, right now it's scheduled about 28 months.
So he will not be an employee after the contract?
If he spends all the money that... And, I mean, he needs to be an employee for the length of the A-15 project. And the estimate of that end date is that 31st of December, 2017?
20...
17.
Thank you.
I'm just curious, because I live off of A-15, where is this project going to take place, or what does it involve?
It's the rehabilitation, it's the second phase, the first phase was the re, the re, what's the word? That starts with...
Alignment?
Yeah, realignment thing.
Oh, right.
Realignment of the old A-15 right up into the city. This next phase will take it into commercial, and right down to going.
Any other public comment? Okay, seeing no further public comment, we have a motion in the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
We are tabling C, Review of the City of Portola Procedures Manual, until the next meeting. Then we'll move on to D, State Parks Off-Highway Vehicle Grant. Consider City Involvement in Developing Grant Application. Discussion, Possible Action. Robert?
Madam Mayor, thank you, council members. About a year ago, we talked with Mr. Carmichael about maybe doing another race on his property that was very successful a couple of years ago, and he and the council authorized us to move forward to work with him and the county to put together maybe another event or two a year, and as my staff report says, we were pretty unsuccessful in working with the county, they would like to see a special use permit, they probably figured CEQA would be triggered, and so we went back to Mr. Carmichael, and he indicated, well, why doesn't the city just buy my property? Well, I said, find us the money, and we will, so he actually directed Todd to have a conversation with State Parks, who were extremely excited about this prospect, as the background says, there isn't a facility like this in this part of the world. I have seen these in other places in California, run as either a city park, a regional park, or state park. And they were so excited, they sent us the manual, they're planning on a site visit, and that is August 20th, I think. And they seemed very confident that we could apply for the grant to purchase the property, annex it into the city, and develop a park, trails, motorized, and probably bicycles. So we wanted to just check in with you, to make sure that was still of interest, because it has changed quite a bit from working with the property owner in the county, to us pretty much taking over the project.
I think it has potential for no use, or economic engine for us. I think it's a great idea, personally.
I've heard a lot of people want it.
I think there's a lot of potential that we can do, and if it's a money maker for the city also, then I, so far, I don't see any downside to that myth.
Yeah, I have a lot of friends involved in the off-highway use stuff, from motorcycles to bicycles to ATVs, et cetera. You want something to help this community, you'll fill your motels. If you can get something like this set up that actually gets some use, there's a place up off of 395 across from Honey Lake, that the pros, that race in Supercross and other motocross, including Europe, come to train in. So if you can get something decent set up out here, this could really help this community.
You can even put EMX track... And there's a lot of grants for EMX tracks right now.
Yeah, you're doing a lot of stuff.
The parts was 490 acres, so it's kind of a funny, you have...
Sure, absolutely.
Multi-use.
All right.
They hit a bike track up by Chico, and the residents actually got it shut down because of noise factor. Has anybody considered that, or put it on the publicity? Is there any problem with that?
That will be part of the process.
I think, thus far, they never shut down, because I think it's a great idea.
So under the recommendation, we wanted you to determine that applying for the grant to purchase, annex, and develop an OHV park was still in good favor, and it looks like it is. Authorize the use of grant riders if necessary, because as I said in my report, we're up to our eyeballs in vital infrastructure projects right now, as far as grants from a pretty low tax. They will be on the site visit tour with the state, and they've already started a conversation with State Parks on our behalf, and...
The grant riders?
Grant riders administrators, they're a company out of Chico, that we plugged into the budget, so the money is in the budget. However, as I, number three says, continue the application process and report back on the progress at future meetings, and develop a budget for additional cost of application development, and that should say if necessary.
How much is he wanting to sell the property for? Is there a figure yet?
No. But I think it's, he'll probably be pretty reasonable, because he knows the value of what it would be to the city, so I'm sure it's going to be adverbial, slightly below fair market price. It's, how many acres is it? I think it's 400, or something.
487, or something like that.
487.
Yeah.
Okay, so it sounds like this is something we want to continue with, may I add a motion?
I made a motion that you continue on the path that I presented.
All right, any other further public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. E, Approval of Agreement for Architectural Services, CDVG. Consider Approval of Agreement with Lake Shelter's Architecture. Discussion and Possible Action.
So this is another item, it probably could have been in consent, but it's in front of you, at this time, this is just a requirement from CDVG for the sole source of procurement approval, and people doing on this project.
And just again, to clarify, all of these in this have already been pre-approved through the CDVG.
Yep.
Have any questions?
We only have one architect, you're the most...
I'll tell you, you know, we put these things out to bid, but staff could talk to you all night long about how difficult it is to work through CDVG, Community Development Block Grants through the state, because they're funded by the feds, and everything passes through HUD down to California. There's not too many architects that want to put up with that nonsense for such a small project. Blake knows it pretty well, and he's the only one that applied.
So he's...
And you have to have an engineering stamp too, so that kind of limits your pool's applicants as well. But we sent it out a couple of times, and actually Blake was ready to start back in March, but because of the state, you have to do all these findings and facts and whatnot, so we're there now.
I make a motion that you approve the agreement.
All right, we have a motion in the second, does anybody have public comment or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
And as you said, item eight is being pulled from the agenda, because there's nothing to report on, really, it was just a place open.
Okay, so one of the shortest meetings ever. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?